Next item is appointments on the Jenderes Hill truck beds.
Yep, I'll be right with you.
Dan.
Um, I don't have a public comment on this. How was the posting, how was that posting?
It was, I know it was in the paper for an A's.
The truck bed?
Yeah, exactly, sorry.
Right.
So many A's. Yeah.
I didn't know about it.
Yeah, and I, it's been posted down to. I have to move my fingers. But normally I got a couple. So we get, we get a Chevy and a Ford. We get two of these for the Chevy.
Who's this from?
This is our most highly quoted.
Where did that one come from?
I haven't got, I've got it open yet. I have a check from Asian Auto Services out of Plastow. And the bid for, it says, sick, I've got a check. You know, you tell me what the price is. I got a ch- uh.
Well, the check should be for 10%, correct, Peter?
Sixty-four dollars. But, but he has the Chevy truck with Pla- six hundred and thirty-two dollars and twelve cents. I think this needs that.
That's a good buy.
Well, I, it's a 2003, so, uh, I guess that will have to, uh, Peter, why don't you just come up here, Peter, I'll show up to you as we go through this too. You can see where we're at, Suzanne's trying to do that, there's the envelope that goes with it. So you can look at it.
What percent did we request?
Yeah, I'm gonna open this one up here. The next one I have is the.
That's a Ford.
Steel, steel bid.
I think you're right.
This is for a 2008 Ford listed on the outside, this is a select bid. Now this comes from buried up at Asian Auto Services again. This one here is for six thousand five hundred and forty-three dollars and twenty-one cents. The check's for 155, so.
That doesn't make sense.
I, I'm just, I am just the gentleman that's reading it. And here they are, right down there, is the envelope that goes with it.
Yeah, it's six, it's 655.
Okay, six, I'm sorry, it's 655, but sure as heck looks like 155.
Yeah, it does, I can see why you thought.
Thank you, at least I got something to do.
No.
No, two separate.
There's two separate bids.
6,000 on this one, 650 on this one.
This one here is by 2003 Chevy, right here.
630, 632.
155, 6,000. Okay, 10%.
Third bid is from, a check for 50 dollars. I'm getting ready to open it soon as I can. He bids 500 dollars for the blue Chevy pickup with Plow. Jim Chase has that, he has a check for, was there, was a Chevy truck for sale?
Yes.
Oh, that, I thought we were buying them.
No, 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 no.
So what are the amounts?
Uh, that's what I thought was.
So 500, 6 something?
5, 632.
632 and 500, and then on the other one.
Was 6,543.
6,000.
Number two, the price is 43.
Okay, well.
And that's for what truck?
What price?
The Ford one time.
The Ford one time, for the Chevy pickup, it's, the best bid is 6, 632.
Okay, I'm going to turn these bids over to Suzanne, John, and Connor, let them make a decision, it's what it is. Do we want that decision to come back to the next, uh, board meeting?
I'll make a motion. What? Asian death, I'll make the motion.
All right, make a motion, Dan.
I make a motion for Asian Auto Services, the two highest bids, so, 2003, three-quarter ton, for 632.
2008.
And the Ford, is that 2008, 2008, for 6,555? 6,543.
Forty-three, whatever the number is.
I'd second that.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Yes.
Okay, so there you go, that's taken care of. Next, we have public comments, or anybody here has public comment, please? Seeing none, Dan, did you have a public comment?
I would just like to say that I think that with these miserable little stones, which cost as much as big stones, that the crew does an excellent job of it.
Here, here, are we, did I?
Agreed.
Agreed. Does the board have any public comments? Any for the public, seeing none, I'll move on to review of the minutes from December 3rd, 2018. I'll take them one at a time.
I'd make a motion to accept the meeting minutes from December 3rd of 2018.
I'll second it.
I have a second, Mrs. Hatch, any comments?
Aye.
Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We have minutes from December 10th, 2018.
I'd make a motion to accept the meeting minutes from December 10th, 2018.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
I have a second. Any comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. And, uh, we have minutes from December 17th, 2018.
I make a motion to accept the meeting minutes from December 17th of 2018.
I have a motion second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, no more comments. So the minutes were, all three minutes were approved. Moving on, we have the staff report. John, you have some, are the writers?
The fire chief has come in requesting converting space, that the fire department wishes to divide into two rooms. My suggestion is that since it's a town building, the board submit a building permit to the building inspector, that a fire protection engineer verify the details, that it be a half hour separation for the two rooms, the installation of a domestic sprinkler system of 13D, and that these be listed as dorm rooms on the application, to be clear, this is approving a dorm.
Discussion, board?
Can I understand this a little better? Were we presented with this prior to this meeting?
Uh, I had, I had sent out a packet with the building permit application.
I had no idea what that was, but thank you, okay. So, shouldn't admit that publicly and on camera. So, going ahead with a building permit for this, do we have the funding to pay for the sprinkler system and to utilize this space in that manner?
This is approximately a $3,000 sprinkler system, maybe 5,000. This is a residential 13D, not the full building permit. This is only sprinkling the two rooms and putting another layer of sheet rock, probably is what gets you the half hour separation. We've already bought the sheet rock, I think, out of last year.
But it's my understanding that if we were going to use the police station as holding cells or spaces where people were sleeping, that it would require a completely different sprinkler system.
Correct.
Am I wrong about this?
But, John, yeah.
There's a provision under the code for what they call accessory use.
Okay.
Where if you don't use more than 10% of the building for a residential purpose, not a holding cell. A holding cell and interrogation cell are two different things. So if you've got a jail cell to where someone's locked up and they have no way to rescue themselves, that's one thing. That's totally different than a sleeping area.
Okay.
So.
So we want to put this in front of John, apparently, yeah?
Yes.
Okay.
We're talking some different stuff.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, Tracy, have you finished?
Listed as dorm room, these to be listed as dorm rooms. Why do we need dorm rooms in the fire station?
We have people stay overnight there on a regular basis for, for, for being on call.
The, the original blueprints, the original, the original blueprints called that for open space. And during the time that that was done, there was some extra money and the, the board at that time allowed it to be spent to, for electricity, dry wood, and, uh, I think water and drainage, the sink. Anyway, so. No?
And, as, as I understand it, what happened is, the original plan was for this to eventually be dorm space. They came up with having to put an elevator in, when they had to put the elevator in, they decided they'd better put the sheet rock upstairs because they weren't going to be able to get it around the corner once they put the elevator in. Uh, then they decided to put the sheet rock on, so there was what I would call Project Creek on this project. Once they had it, uh, sheet rock, the fire department has been using it ever since for a variety of purposes, one of which has been that people stay overnight sometimes up there.
While on call.
While on call.
Okay, so.
But also they've stayed overnight in emergency situations and some other situations.
So, you have people who work for you chief, who are spending the night at the fire station while on call?
So what we, what he does though is he's got one room that he's using and he wants to separate it so he can have gender separation. So he's taking that room and splitting it, but to do that, he needed a building permit. To get the building permit, he has to comply with, in John's eyes, this accessory use, which would be a half hour separation with the domestic sprinkler system.
Sure, so the only thing I'm going to mention is my HR hat tells me that on call does not mean you have to stay in the building.
You're a hundred percent correct.
So it's voluntary.
It is voluntary.
Thank God, okay, thank you.
Any other comments, please, Dan?
Yeah, um, what was sent out last week and the costs and stuff is totally difficult. He's asking for it tonight and stuff. And I can't vote because this is not giving me a timely manner. These costs are wrong and stuff, and I need better figures.
We want better, better cost numbers before we.
For our, for our vote. This is drop on me and stuff, this totally changed what you sent out and what's presented here tonight.
Thank you. I can get more, I can get better numbers for another meeting. Uh, the deputy police chief, um, the position was awarded to George Joy. George Joy accepted. Uh, he's now, um, on the, on the scale that the board approved for the, for the upcoming year as a salary position. The question is, where that's now salary, should he be taken out of the hourly line and that added to the, um, salary line? The line could be changed so it no longer says salary chief, it just says police salary. So you'll have two salaries in there and then you'll have all the rest in the hourly. Do you want to make that change or not?
Dan?
Yes, and then, I need to understand the salary, what these hours are mean with salary.
Salary means that a person works the required amount to complete their job, it's not based on hours anymore. So if someone's exempt, they're exempt from being paid overtime. If it is required that the deputy chief work 80 hours in a week, they are paid the same amount during that week, regardless of the number of hours worked.
All right, well, it's all those benefits of town, I don't, I can see it.
Generally, anytime somebody becomes salaried, it benefits the employer, so if the employer's the town, then yes, it does.
Thank you.
So the question is, for budget and purposes, do you want me to change the, uh, the budget? Not the bottom line, but the way the money is divided up within there? I see.
So I would make a motion to move those dollars to the appropriate lines.
Yep.
Have a second, is there further discussion? Yes, what would, my, my question is, John, look at this, is this a range that we're paying the, uh?
Yeah, what I put in, yeah, what I put in here is the grade and the nine steps that go with the deputy police chief. Um, Bob, I think said that he, that he was hired at step four. Is that?
Step four.
Yes.
All right, so Dan, further discussion? Seeing none, uh, have a vote, please, aye, aye.
Article aye.
Aye.
Carries 400, thank you very much, everyone.
Okay, the next question has to do with the next meetings for, uh, there are two factors that affect it. One is the wildcat turnaround, where we need to have a meeting, two weeks of meeting, two weeks of meetings. The other has to do with, um, I know Tracy can't make next week, I'm not sure, we need to have a meeting next week. Malago Benroken is on the 14th. Okay, we need to have a meeting next week? Yes, okay, good, good catch. So, uh, shall we meet the 14th and the 21st and the 28th, or do you want to just meet the 14th and then the 28th?
Yeah, yes.
14th and then the 28th. I will need signatures the week of the 21st.
Yeah, I won't be in attendance at the 14th, I'm fortunate.
Okay. And then the 28th?
Do we want to have the meeting on the, on 3, or do we only want to have the meeting on the 14th and 28th? Over for discussion, please.
The 14th and the 28th, the 28th, the second is the conversion.
This is to handle some of the town business, we have to, we have to have a vote on some of those days to take care of the elections coming up.
I think the 14th and 28th is good.
Okay, it sounds good to me.
Sorry. And the 28th will also.
Headless is something you really need.
Yeah, I just.
I shouldn't, I shouldn't.
If it doesn't, then we'll have, we'll have a call if, if it comes to the point, we'll have a call of the chair for the 14th if necessary.
Okay.
And mean the 21st.
I mean the 21st, sorry, we'll have a call of the chair for the 21st if necessary.
Okay, so we've scheduled.
So that means, that means, Dan, if something comes up that we have to vote, I will, uh, John will post it, that will notify everyone that we are just going to have a meeting on that day for that particular.
21st is Martin Luther King Day.
Yeah, that's, that's just in case we have to have for the legal aspect of it.
Okay, now, for February, we have a meeting on the 2nd for celebration of Groundhog Day and deliberative session.
That's Saturday, the 2nd?
Yeah, we'll have a selectmen's meeting after the meeting, ABC will need a meeting as well. ABC will need a meeting after.
Steve?
And after the deliberative session, we'll need, we ought to post and schedule a meeting for the ABC if that will work. Because if there are any changes, you may change your recommendation, that's the, the logic of it.
You need our recommendation by the 21st?
Yes, by the 21st of January, and then you get to vote again at the, after the deliberative if there have been amendments of anything.
So we predicated on any changes that need, that will be all set?
And it would just be at the end of the meeting, is that going to work for?
It will, but, so Brad's out of town next week, so we're gonna have to meet this week. And we're just gonna be waiting on a few things from you guys before we vote, like the final and the town hall, the actual revenues. How soon can we get that stuff so we can give you an answer this week?
Uh, the town hall, they've already taken the vote.
Right.
Uh, the, uh, we should finish the salary stuff and have that before this meeting is over tonight.
So the only other thing would be revenues, then?
Revenue is done.
So you said there was like still two weeks?
Expenditures, we still get another two weeks of expenditures.
Revenues are set.
Revenues are set.
And that's what we have here?
Yes.
Thank you.
And then it's, it's the end of, end of tonight's meeting, as we stated earlier, we're going to run a non-public session and we're going to make amendments to the budget, so that, so if you wanted to be there, you'll have that too, I'm not amendments, but.
But as far as the February, as far as the February meeting after the 2nd, do you want to plan to meet then the, um, the, the 11th and the 25th, or what do you want to meet in February?
That's 3.
The 11th? And 25?
11 and 25 are the 2nd and the.
2, 11 and 25.
Yeah, yeah, but the one on the 2nd is a relatively.
And we still have the 4th as a snow date for deliberative, so.
Correct.
Okay, so the 11th and 25th were selected for meetings.
Yep.
So it's, it's 11?
2, 11 and 25, 1, 14, 1, 28, and then 2, 11th, February 2nd, 11 and 25. Okay.
18th is President's Day and 25th.
Okay. Does that work? Okay. And, um, uh, that's all I have, other than I need a non-public for. We'll, we'll let the March dates out. Um, March 11th would be a normal meeting.
Normal, yes.
Yep.
The 11th is no meeting.
So I would say March 11th and 25th are going to be the meetings.
Okay, and when, I hate to sound like I'm admitting it again, what date are we actually voting on the proposed?
The 12th.
The 12th, March 12th. Okay, we need to put together a plan for those hours that we have required to cover.
Just have too much time, I'm gonna take away from you.
I'm really busy.
Okay, so, we've got, we've got.
Can't cover any?
Um, I've got a couple of things in non-public, one is a review of a legal letter and the other is personnel.
Okay.
Suzanne, do you have anything?
Um, I have a land use change tax warrant, vendor manifested January 4th, payroll manifested December 30th. That's it.
Anything else, Suzanne?
No.
All right, we'll sign those out for the meeting, please. The next goes to staff report, any, anybody have anything on your own business, please?
No, but if we sign them now, we should improve social security.
Okay, we'll pass it around, yeah.
We're gonna come back anyway.
Oh, we are, okay.
Yeah, we have a session, yeah.
Check, check. Article right on.
So if there's no, if there's no old business, we'll move on? Seeing none, we'll move on to new business. One of the items I had put on here is select, select person correspondence. I just, this is a, an information and it is no way meant to be a reprimand to anybody. All I'm going to say is that we, including myself, we need to watch our communications with each other so that we can make a statement, we don't request to have information sent back to us on how we feel about a certain item or what have you. So that's all I'm going to ask you to do. And also, opinions is what we need to have out there to come with it. And, uh, and promote a position on that is not going to be acceptable in our emails that if we do send them out that way. So, opinions are acceptable, but promoting something is not acceptable. So I'd appreciate if everybody would do that, make, make a thing of it. So John, we take, take care of the public safety permit, there's nothing else in the new business? We have the selectmen's report, just air.
I need.
Go ahead, Dan, what?
I want to clarify what you said, to write it down.
Yeah, I don't think opinions are acceptable. I think you can only list facts.
That's why you see any comments?
We have, we have to wait until we give this free comment out.
Yes, we will.
We'll have that taken care of, so you'll have it personally. Select persons, uh, select person air, your report, please, you have one?
Conservation, we've reviewed, uh, the, uh, the ACHL tradition. And then except for getting grants and stuff, that's what we're talking about tonight, that is discussed and stuff.
It's like a helicopter.
Next week, the 14th is the rec meeting and I will be at that.
You'll be in June, it's the 21st?
21st.
I look forward to it. John?
No meeting for the zoning board.
Yeah, we had the library, the library had a, uh, discussion on the new building and acceptance of money or what have you. And, uh, all I can tell you is it was just a normal meeting on expenditures and what have you, that's all I have for that.
If I may, um, one thing that Susan Gardiella noticed is that there was an inconsistency between my various documents and I had an error in there, it should be 50,000 towards the town hall preservation fund everywhere and some, two places I had it 75, so I'll change them all to 50. That's my understanding of what you wanted was 50.
No, it's town hall preservation.
That's the police station, article, town buildings.
Oh, okay, that, okay, thanks.
Any further public comments?
I'd like to make a public comment.
Peter, just a minute, okay.
Well, mine's very short. I just want to congratulate George Joy on his new position and hope for you that you can all work together.
Thank you.
Now, Mr. Cook?
Yeah, um, as you all know, we're aware, we rented mini excavator. Um, been trying to purchase one for four or five years and every year it's not the right time or we don't send any money aside, so we've been renting them. Um, we've rented one for the last three years. Um, first year was 2016, we rented it for four months, it was at 14, 7, 10. 2017 was six month rental, that was at 20,190. And this year was six month rental at 25,080. Um, obviously that comes up to a grand total of just, just under 60 grand. A new machine is 120. Um, so a couple more years, we paid for the machine and we still have nothing to show for it. Um, so I, I talked to our John Deere and what we were able to come up with was two different options. Um, at least, both of them are lease options, but what they're willing to do, um, I'll give the paperwork to John and hopefully you'll, you'll take the time to look at it. The only problem is there is a time limit on it, we gotta, if we're gonna do it, we gotta act by the end of the month. Or if the machine sells that we used this year, then, then the offer's no good. But what they'll take and do is they'll take 18,000 of what we paid in rental fees this year and put it towards the lease, um, on both options. The first option is a 48 month at 27, 104. And then the second option is a 60 month lease at 22, 185. And I was looking at both these options, um, either way, what it would, how it would affect the budget is if we went with the first option, we pay the 27 at the end of the 48 months, when we redo the budget, obviously the rental line would drop by probably half. Um, second option, if you decided to go with the section, second option, which is actually less than what we're renting the machine for per year, um, you could, you could do that now, if you did that now, you could lower the rental line by another, by $5,000 right now. Um, what I'm here to do is just to present this, because I know you're not going to make a decision on it tonight. But, um, and the reason I'm here and the reason I brought this up was because the mini excavator is a valuable piece of equipment. The biggest benefit, there are two benefits. The two biggest benefits to a rubber tracked machine is you can work on the pavement without doing damage like we did out here on the ditch lines. And the biggest advantage of the machine is you can do your ditch work and you only have to close one lane of the road. So the road usually, unless it's a culvert, usually you can do your work and keep the road open. Those are the two biggest advantages of a rubber tracked excavator, along with obviously the reach of the machine as far as getting material in the back of the truck and getting the material on the back of the truck. Um, I'll give John, excuse me, I've been sick for a couple of weeks, so just be able to, um, I'll give John the numbers and I'll give him the paperwork. Um, I've been working on this for a couple, couple, three, four weeks now and trying to come up with an option.
Peter, is that a lease to own?
Yes.
Thank you.
At the end of that five year, if you went with the 48 months, you own the machine. If you went with the 60 months, you'd own the machine. The machine's probably, it, it actually, we dropped it off last year, it was a new machine, it had 20 hours on it. We put on 310, so it's, you know, bring it out, 20 plus 310, whatever, that comes up 330. Um, and that is a new machine, it comes with a warranty, but you know, uh, it's all written down here and everything.
Oh, warranty?
Yeah, the first two years and then after that, sign. You probably, the lifespan is anywhere from 10 to 15. So, you probably, the lifespan is anywhere from ten to fifteen years, depending on how you treat the machine. So basically, what you're doing is instead of renting year after year after year, you're, the first five years, you're leasing it, and then you got ten years of just maintenance costs, and you're not, you're not spending that money. Another three years, like I said, in another three years, we spent in rental what you could have to buy it, so.
Selectman Hargan?
Are you, based on the lease that you're, you would potentially sign, or are you limited to the number of work hours that you could put on? For example, if you choose not to buy it for some reason halfway through the lease, do you have to pay more than the proposed amount based on the number of hours that you've used the machine?
I didn't ask him that.
Okay.
Is, is there a non-appropriation clause, meaning if we do not pay, they take it back with no penalty? That's kind of where we're going to?
I didn't ask him that because I assumed it would just come out of the rental line.
You, you can't proceed to buy it without a town meeting vote, unless there's a non-appropriations clause in there?
I can answer.
Yeah.
Can you answer?
We can't really get into more than eighteen-month agreement, either.
What?
What's the other one, we can't get more than eighteen months?
No, we can't, we can go into a lease purchase with a non-appropriation clause for a longer term because it's basically, can be broken at any point without incurring additional expenditure.
All right.
So that, assuming, assuming the answer to Tracy and my questions are both satisfactory, is the board interested in proceeding?
I for sure am, anybody else?
It seems to make economic sense.
I need.
We're not voting tonight, we're just saying I'm interested in it so they can go forward.
Yes, interested in getting more information.
Yes.
Mrs. Hatch? Okay, this is forward, so I think Andy will get more information. Make sure that we notify Andy of this, please. Mr. Dan? Thank you, Peter, very, I really appreciate that.
Yeah.
Any other public comment? Seeing none, I would like a motion from the board to go into a non-public session under RSA ninety-one for, uh, personnel. A, personnel, legal, and reputation. Personnel is for A and B, reputation is by itself, and legal is for Article L. I have a motion. I second it.
Aye.
Article five.
Bailey, aye. Please, please note that when we come back out, we will continue with the meeting after we finish, let's, shall we adjourn to the other room, please? Do you want, you want to send them in the other room?